Please.
Del Meyer, Eastling. Unmute yourself.
Here, here.
Link Hammer.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Rice.
Here.
Okay, reminder to use your microphone, Curtis on remote. Uh, we have nobody in the chamber and nobody on Zoom, so I'm going to pass over the citizens' input and ask for anything to be held for separate discussion on the consent agenda. Have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion second, call roll please.
Eastling.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is approved. We'll move on to the public hearing. The motion, this is a public hearing for the City of Asbury FY twenty-four budget. Is there a motion to open the public hearing and hear interested parties?
So moved.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, may join, no? The motion to close, well, we do have a resident in the chamber. Did you want to speak, sir? You're good, all right. There motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed, okay, you have resolution forty-nine of twenty twenty-three, a resolution adopting the City of Asbury FY twenty-four budget. Let me apologize for the confusion last week. Um, Beth, I clearly identified the steps we should and shouldn't take. Apologize for inter- in- interjecting the confusion. Um, the bottom line was, you set the max. You can still lower it tonight. Not the max, they can set the levy lower, no? That was the question last time, if we can't lower it, why are we having a public hearing? So please correct me where I'm wrong. All right.
So, just to clarify for me then, if, what's the purpose of this public hearing is where I am confused? What can we change after the public hearing? But, but by setting it means that it could be changed? Right, I understand, I, I guess that where we got confused was, we had a public hearing to set the max, okay? Now we're having a public hearing on the budget, so wouldn't one of the results of this public hearing allow you to change the budget? That's why I, that's, I, that's the part I, if we can't change the budget, then why would we have a public hearing?
What we're trying to do at the last meeting, the goal was to get the max levy hearing passed because we knew that was going to be the max. The motion that I had left instructions for you to do is if you wanted to continue with the max levy to set the date for public hearing. If you didn't want to set the date for public, if you didn't want to accept that max resolution, you should have had further discussion and come up with a, an, some, some rate between zero and nine dollars and thirty-one cents that you could agree upon, that I could have then recalculated and set a date for public hearing for tonight, so that we could approve for the April twenty-fifth. So, the, the procedure should have been, if you didn't want the nine thirty-one in the budget that was set forth, you should have tabled, gave me some numbers that said we want to do it nine fifteen, we want to do it nine ten, we want to do it zero. And then I would have used those numbers so that we could set a date for public hearing with those numbers, so we can publish it. Because whatever we publish in the newspaper is what you then have to adopt.
So Beth, let, let me ask this. So today is the eleventh. If they wanted to table it tonight, we could publish twenty-four, uh, let me finish. Shake your head no. Tomorrow we could, we could publish a meeting for twenty-four hours in advance. It, uh, let me step through it before you tell me it doesn't work. I'm just making sure if this council, if this confusion that was interjected causes grief for them at the nine thirty-one, they still want to lower it. Let me walk through it. So they table it tonight, tomorrow is the twelfth. They could publish an agenda twenty-four hours in advance, have a meeting on the thirteenth, correct? And at that meeting, they could set a date for the public hearing fourteen days later? What's, 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 what's the state mandated notifications for the public hearing? I'm, I'm trying to work, work through this. Cause the deadline is the thirtieth of April? Again, they could table it tonight, we could publish an agenda tomorrow, we can meet on the thirteenth. They can make a motion to set the day for public hearing at nine dollars and twenty-two and a half cents on the thirteenth, correct? Okay.
Set the date.
That would be fourteen days later by law. Correct? We need, what, what's the notice, what's the time for the, set the date?
We have published notice, not less than ten days prior to the, um, having the public hearing on the budget.
Okay, so again, well, walk me through this, on the thirteenth, we have a meeting. Council sets the date for public hearing with, with the levy at nine dollars and twenty cents, just numbers to work with. So we have the minimum, we have to wait at least ten days to set that, to have that meeting, correct? You just told me.
We have to publish at least ten days before the meeting.
Okay, so.
In order to have that.
So we meet on the thirteenth, you publish it on the fourteenth, we meet on the twenty-fifth. We've met the letter of the law, have we not? So on the twenty-fifth, we have a meeting and then, and then they take the action that you're talking about tonight where they approve the budget. Okay, so there's your answer. If you want to, if you want to do something different than nine thirty-one, then table it tonight, we will put all the, all the notifications in order, just understand you're going to have to have an extra meeting in order for that to happen. So, you are not locked in, is one point I'm trying to make right now, is I don't want to think that my, my statements locked you in at nine thirty-one. When I'm, when I walk through with Beth tells me you're not locked into that, you can still table it tonight, meet all the, all the notifications for the state of Iowa and have a lower levy and meet Beth's requirement to get it into the state, so.
Just, I'm, I apologize again, but last, at the last meeting, I thought we approved the maximum amount, that, the budget. We, we're, right, which is what I, which is how we've done in the past. And then I always thought that was as, that was the higher end limit. And then after that, we could always go lower, but we could never go higher than that. So I always thought we had one opportunity, I thought at the meeting tonight, we could change, we can go lower than seven thirty-one and approve it, and we're done. But that doesn't sound like that's the case. So that's why, I apologize for the confusion, but, but I always thought, once we sit, we set the max, and then there was one other, that was the max we could go, but we always had the opportunity to lower the budget. We don't have to reset the max.
No, we don't, we don't, but what you're talking about, the opportunity to set it lower was the second motion of the night. That set the, when you set the date for the public hearing for tonight, that locked you into the levy. Which, help me out here, I mean, that's what you were telling me when we, the second motion of the night of, of the last meeting was the one that set levy.
What, what, like I said, what should have, what potentially could have happened at that, when you're talking about low, taking that next motion is, once we look at the budget, that's your next public hearing you have is on the budget. So, you're right, the max levy set the max, but when you set the date for the public hearing on the budget, you have to publish that and you have to publish that rate, and when I go and file that budget as it's been published, if it's something different, then we have to redo it. So what I have to have is a rate, that's why it would have been allowable to table to set the date for public hearing on the budget, so that, and you would have discussed and gave direction as to what you wanted that rate to be, so that at this meeting, then we would set the date for public hearing with whatever agreed upon rate would be, so that I could publish that, so that, so then you can give that ten days notice or publication, so that we could approve it. And if that all makes sense to you, it's a lot of steps that we have to do, but it's the steps we have to take.
In a typical year, would we had those motions both on the same night, set the max and set the public hearing, or we'd, we'd usually space those out by meeting?
No, we typically set the, we set the, we passed the max levy resolution on the same night as we set the date for public hearing, but in usually at that point, we usually ha- are in agreement as to the direction that we're marching down, so then we, you know, continue on that.
So we didn't do anything in a different order this year?
That's correct.
Okay, or, okay, we were, the, the fact, okay.
Fact, the fact that's different this year is the disagreement as to where the levy rate should be set.
So there you have it, you can still lower it, but you need to table this tonight. And we will put everything in place for you to, well, they table it tonight, but they need to give you the number though, correct?
They table tonight, yes, I need to know a number, so when we meet again on the, whatever date we decide to meet again and set the date, we need to have a number, so I have a number to publish in the budget.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number forty-eight of twenty twenty-three with the, uh, approved budget with the number being nine thirty-one.
Second.
Motion, uh, motion made by Rice, second by Eastling, further discussion?
I guess I'd still like to, you know, I still think we should keep it at nine, I think we've got plenty of reasons and, and ways to recoup that seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, I'm concerned for the citizens of Asbury after reading the paper today about the school district. Um, school district's going to go up, your, your tax bill will go up a hundred and fifty-eight dollars if you have a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollar house. So basically, on Asbury, it's going to be over two hundred. And then you add on our utility and the fifty-eight dollars that we have, so, you know, tax, your taxes and you, and everything's going to go up about three hundred dollars in Asbury, so. I'm concerned and I'm still pushing for nine dollars, but.
I think it's important that people look and see that and understand that fifty percent of their property tax bill is not going to the City of Asbury, explaining that to them, that it is going to the public school system. I think, uh, yeah, I'm still comfortable with what we're doing with it, because we still see the prices and costs, everything is going up. And we also are cognizant of the fact that even though this, you, you speak of seventy-five thousand dollar shortfall, that's only for this year, it, which I have a feeling is going to be multiplied in the upcoming years, so. And we are still looking at the fact that we could lose, uh, lost funding too.
I feel you brought up a lot of good points for us, but I agree that I, I don't want to be short. And let's just stick with it and go with what they recommend. Let's not have a shortfall.
I agree.
Bob, anything? Yeah, he can still speak in favor, hard.
Well, I could look at this selfishly and go, if, if this is my last year in the council, it'd be easy to say, let's take it out of reserve. But I would look, I would choose to leave future councils in a strong position that they only have to go up smaller increments by doing this at the beginning, instead of waiting the second or third year to do the increases. So, again, I would, I would be a proponent of this budget as the way it is.
Okay, any other comments? Call roll please.
Eastling.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Nay.
Motion approved four-one, we'll move on to the first new business item of resolution forty-nine of twenty twenty-three, a resolution approving change order number eight for the Meadows Clubhouse renovation project.
Believe change order eight has to do with the, uh, drainage or, uh, from the ADA compliant parking lot. For the design that, uh, that front area of the clubhouse was to get caught into a pipe and then tie into the existing drain pipe at the southwest corner of our existing parking lot, uh, when they dug down to get to the area where they were going to connect those tubes, that pipe had been oval. But they had to do some exploratory, we did some camera work to see how far the damage was. Were able to dig back a short way, uh, Ehrlich was able to come up with a very cost-friendly solution for us where, uh, we were able to, to dig a little further down, or down the pipe and find a better piece, um, and then were able to attach the new pipe there, clamp it, encase it in concrete. Uh, that was by far our most cost efficient solution for that problem.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions or motion?
What's, what's the total amount of the change order, Jeremy?
One thousand seven hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Thank you. We did, we thought it was, well, they did televise it.
Yep.
And just full disclosure, there's a good portion that's still collapsed, but we didn't feel it was the time or the place to, it'd been probably collapsed for twenty years anyhow, so we weren't going to fix it.
Sounds like, has this work already been done?
Um, I believe this piece has already been done, yes, so they can keep that part moving, I think, I think.
This is the concern I always have, is anything to do with you, but.
Yep.
Proving change, if, you know, proving change orders after the fact is, I, I always have, I just have a problem. That's just me.
Yep, understood.
It's within the spending limit and, on these projects, it's customary to do small change orders, to keep the project moving along. If you like, we could give you a poll, we could poll the council, but they're non-binding, so we don't generally do that unless we're over the spending limit.
Yeah, I do feel sometimes you run into stuff you have no idea you're going to run into and you gotta do what you gotta do.
And that pipe, that pipe was twelve feet, I mean, it was, it, it's down there, so there was no way that we were.
Who's going to know that? Right.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number forty-nine of twenty twenty-three.
I'll second.
Motion second, discussion? Call roll.
Eastling.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
That's approved five-zero. And resolution fifty of twenty twenty-three, a resolution approving pay-up number eight for the Meadows Clubhouse reconstruction project.
Yeah, this is, I mean, this is for work that's already been completed, I'm sure it's signed by, uh, Andrew and everything is going as fast as seemingly possible.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number fifty dash twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion second, discussion?
Are we ready to go?
We're open and going. We're going. Yep, along, Mark and my team has put in a fair amount of time in the last couple of weeks getting ready, it's, we're going. Feedback on the building has been tremendous, people love it. Um, so things are very positive right now.
How's the simulators booking up?
Um, we've had a few, I mean, obviously with the, the nice weather like we've had even like this week, people really want to get out on the golf course, they've been pooped up all winter, so that's really the main, uh, the main draw. Um, you know, perhaps this weekend when, when the weather kind of bottoms out, we, we might see some bookings. Um, a lot of tours, a lot of tours to the facility, uh, mainly the comments, as we go through the building with people, relative to the simulators, is they cannot wait for winter, like they're saying this winter, it's going to be.
Anything else? Call roll.
Eastling.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
Approved five-zero, uh, resolution fifty-one of twenty twenty-three, a resolution approving pay-up number one for the Hales Mill Road Reconstruction Project Phase Two.
Yeah, um, so just a brief update for council, um, Eastern Iowa's had a, uh, a pipe crew on site, uh, for the past couple of weeks now. I've been sending out those weekly updates, so you're, you should be fairly up to date on the, uh, uh, progress so far. But, uh, Eastern Iowa's been working from the Autumn Drive intersection towards the south on, uh, sanitary sewer items. Uh, they are, as of right now, um, on schedule, things are going well. Um, it is a little bit slower, um, pipe work than maybe with water main, just because it is, um, significantly deeper, but they are, uh, making progress with the sewer and then also some pavement removals. Um, I have had a few comments, um, so far. Um, mail delivery has been kind of spotty, so I've been working with the contractor on that to either get it figured out or, um, we actually just sent an email to them today to, uh, potentially just get, um, the, uh, mailboxes relocated permanently for the remainder of the project if it's going to be an issue for them, so we are working on correcting that. And then I know a few residents had some issues with garbage collection last week, it sounded like, so we should have that figured out this week. Um, other than that, I think things are going pretty well. Uh, with that said, um, payment, uh, for this first pay request is in the amount of thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-one cents, and that, uh, covers a portion of the mobilization, uh, traffic control, some of the erosion control items, uh, pavement removal, and then, um, as I said before, sanitary sewer. Uh, unless council has questions about the project or the pay request, uh, MSA would recommend approval of this pay app number one.
Nate, just, just one question, at the last meeting, you mentioned that we may be opening, uh, Autumn back up again, is that open or no?
It's not, um, I know, um, they didn't have it entirely closed off on the north end, but with Tom and his guys patrolling that north end of the project, I think the traffic has been extremely minor, um, from that end. And I know that there is a relatively significant volume of, uh, traffic through Chloe Creek Park right now. Um, so far, from what Tom has told me, and things may have changed since, uh, then, um, the vehicles are traveling at, you know, reasonable speeds. I think everyone understands that if they're the ones that get caught flying through there, they're going to ruin it for everybody else. So I think right now, things are working fairly well, um, so I think we're going to leave it as is for the moment.
I think the one thing that we want to look at, and Tom, maybe you can help, but we, we had some citizens tonight, after they get through Chloe Creek, uh, they're kind of flying on Autumn, they're flying up through the intersection on Sun Valley and, and Spring Green, and, uh, they're also coming up Whitetail pretty fast too, so.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve pay-off number one.
Second.
Motion second.
Approve resolution number fifty-one of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, I introduced it, so, okay. Heard you second that, please.
Yes, I second, so yes, mhm.
Okay, um, we're still, still at the, the, our DOT decision on the Autumn Drive, we're waiting to hear if that can be open yet. So, we'll keep you posted. All right, anything else? Call roll.
Eastling.
Aye.
Link Hammer.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Rice.
Aye.
Del Meyer.
Aye.
That's approved five-zero, and then we have quarterly financial update.
Um, through March thirty-first, we on public safety, um, we're about sixty-six point three-three percent. Um, partial that is fire and ambulance, we do semi-annual payments. They're only showing fifty percent, but they'll receive a, another fifty percent share in May, and that will be a hundred percent. And with the police showing at seventy percent, uh, most of that is due to some vehicles and equipment that hasn't arrived yet and may not, it may need to be carried forward into the next fiscal year. Um, our building is down, um, it's almost sixty percent, but that also is reflective that our permits and stuff are down as well. So, uh, reflection on our, our building permits is also a reflection of our cost, a reflection of our revenues we see, received through the permitting process. Um, Public Works, um, we're about sixty-four point seven-seven percent through that budget. Um, our wages and salaries are eighty-three point four-three. A lot of that has to do with overtime for snow and ice removal. Our street lighting's at sixty percent, our snow and ice control is at fifty-five percent. A lot of that has to do with the amount of salt that, um, we did not have to purchase, uh, because of carryover salt from the, um, last year. In our culture and recreation, we're at eighty-six point seven-three percent. A lot of that has to do with, we make semi-annual payments to the county for library services, and that's at ninety-eight point two-one percent. Um, our parks are at seventy-three point eight-one percent for expenditures. Um, at general government, we're at sixty-six point four-eight percent. Um, we're going a little bit heavy on our, um, building maintenance repairs, but we did a little bit of reclass last, for this budget year where we moved our janu- janitorial, um, expenses into another fund, and I think I short, short funded the, um, building and repair account, uh, insurance is at ninety-two point seven-three. Um, in the golf course, um, we're at seventy-nine percent, um, through the golf course budget. Um, pro shop is showing eighty point five-seven percent, um, bar and grill is at seventy-one point three-one percent. Um, the banquet is showing a hundred percent, and we have discontinued banquet operations, and there will no longer be revenue or expenses that go through the banquet department. Grounds, we're showing at seventy-nine point two-nine percent. Um, we're, um, showing, um, where we're hitting the max budget on several categories, including salaries, chemicals, insurance, and, well, sales tax is kind of a good thing, that's a function of where we're at for, um, rounds of salt. So that's somewhat of a good thing to be at that point. Um, road use tax, we're at forty-six point four-four percent. Um, the street maintenance part of that is at thirty point two-two percent, but typically, um, blame gets out here in the spring and, um, starts with a lot of, um, street maintenance repairs that, um, we need to do, and that was typically during April, May and June. Um, debt service only shows eight point four percent, um, again, we only receive interest payments in December. Um, we'll receive principal and interest payments here in the months of May and June, so that will, um, clear out that budget. Um, Hales Mill Road, um, right now for budget, we're at seven point three-two percent. That will be increasing now that has, that construction has started. Um, Spring Green, uh, Sunset Autumn Fund three oh two is what I use for our local projects, so we'll start seeing engineering design fees go through that. Um, our ARPA funds, we're at nineteen point five-five percent, um, they'll be starting the fiber phase two here any day now. Um, Chloe Creek Trail, um, that's been completed. Um, vehicles and equipment, I don't know if we're gonna get any. Um, the Meadows through this, um, to March, uh, we're at sixty-one point five-nine percent, but with the pay request we had tonight, that will go up substantially. Um, Hidden Meadows Overlay, um, we're at ninety-four point four-one percent. And that's been, we just have a little bit of finish-up work to do on that project. Um, water, we're at seventy-six point six percent, so we're pretty much right on track for our water budget, our sewer budget, um, we're at eighty-two point nine-two percent. Um, our maintenance repairs has hit a little bit higher because of some of the inventory items, um, that we have paid for. Um, we'll be doing a budget amendment, um, for that line item that you'll be seeing in the next meeting or two. Solid waste is trending on track, and stormwater is also trending on track. Any questions on expenditures? Do you wanna go through the revenues? We can do that. Um, right. Revenues, um, general fund, we're slightly below at sixty-three point nine-three percent, but, um, we will receive a big property tax, um, check in, in this, in April. Typically, October and April are our, our property tax months. Um, the Meadows, um, we're at sixty-nine point five-one percent of our revenues right now. Revenues over expenses in the golf course is negative a hundred two thousand five ninety-seven. Um, road use tax, we've received seventy-nine percent of our road use tax funds. Um, debt service, kind of the same thing, forty-eight point eight percent, but we still have, um, property taxes received in that fund. Our, um, water revenue, we're at seventy-five point five-eight percent. Right now, we're running a little bit behind. Our water expense over revenue is seventeen thousand nine eighty-seven. Sewer, um, we're at eighty point six-nine percent. Um, our sewer expenses, revenue over expenses is three sixty thirteen, but we haven't done transfers for projects yet. Um, solid waste, our revenues are at seventy-five percent. Um, revenue over expense is negative fifty-four thousand eight fifty, but we're using our reserves to fund the deficit. And our stormwater, um, right now, revenue over expenses is forty-one thousand one sixty-three. Any questions on the revenue?
Yeah, Beth, I have one question. When you say that the revenue for water is a little bit behind, does that mean it's gonna get caught up? Did I miss that?
No, I think we just have more expenses than what we, we typically do in the, um, on the water side.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the third quarter report. Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Jim, if you're calling for action, I can't hear you.
Sorry, uh, thanks, I didn't have anything. Uh, no public comment, so we'll move on to the reports. You still can't hear me?
No, I got you now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Jim, report, please report. Any comments or motion to accept?
Move to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All in, okay. Russ, you wanna start? Kurt, he's not here.
I guess the only thing, um, and Beth answered my question at, at the, um, meeting tonight, uh, we had five people there, so that was a good, good thing that our council, community council thing. Um, the one person, the question I ask is about the retaining wall at Casey's, and Beth said that there's a note going out on that, so that's gonna be taken care of, so the only issue that I had.
Kurt?
Uh, yeah, the only, I got two things. Uh, first thing, of course, is thanks to everybody for putting up with my, uh, technical ineptitude. And, uh, the other thing was, uh, just to kind of put it on everybody's, uh, radar, is I, I've been approached by a couple of citizens about putting a windscreen on the pickleball court, and, uh, we're still looking into it. Uh, have a volunteer to actually do the installation. Uh, we'll get some costs together and then, you know, kind of go from there, but just to let everybody know, if somebody has any problem with it, uh, please speak up, but otherwise, it's just kind of out there for, for your thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Yes, the Hales Mill project is moving right along. Living on the street, I get to see them, so yes, they've been there all the time. They are making some, uh, good headway, they are moving pretty quickly. And now that they're getting further down, they don't have to go as deep, so. Uh, the guys have been very helpful in taking care of the different things. Uh, Blaine and his guys are, I know they're keeping tabs on them as well too. So I really do appreciate it, uh, from the residents. I hear good comments from them. Uh, but we also need to be aware that it is getting nicer out. We will be seeing more people out walking and especially children coming home from school. So please watch out for them on, uh, walking on our streets that don't have sidewalks.
Hey, Bob?
We'll pass Jim.
Karen?
Blaine, I heard the street light was fixed up on Summer and Spring Green. Thank you for that, appreciate it. Nate, I'm kind of wondering, I know it's been only a couple of weeks, but any answer back about the scaling on Spring Green?
Um, yeah, so not a whole lot more information now. I reached out to the contractor in an email just to see if they'd be interested in splitting, uh, potentially some of the cost of a petrographic analysis. I do not have an answer back from them at this time. Um, I did look at the cost breakdown of that analysis, um, just to get an idea. It's one of those things where I, I think the price was initially, uh, like ninety-two hundred dollars to do the entire thing. Um, but I think just to take the core samples, three of them, it was gonna be around a thousand dollars. So if it was, uh, you know, a timing thing, you know, as Jim and I had mentioned at the last meeting to, um, try and get the samples as the street is now, um, you know, it's something we could maybe have TerraCon go do and get the samples and just hang on to them, but it would be under the condition that the street is now rather than waiting, you know, potentially longer for other reasons that could, you know, arise as to why things are degrading, and, and it would give us a, a snapshot of what it's like now. Um, so that's, that's one thing, I guess, that I would, um, you know, keep in mind there. And then, you know, the, the other thing too, is that I thought of a little bit more, and I actually Blaine had mentioned after the last meeting, was that, you know, if, if the city were to pay for the entire petrographic analysis, then you know that TerraCon is wholly one hundred percent representing the city. You know, in this instance, where if the contractor were to split some of the cost, you know, then is TerraCon really, you know, looking out for the best interest of just the city, or is it both parties? You know, so one thing to keep in mind there, I guess, too. Um, but for now, that's really all the, the more information I have. I did get, um, some testing information back from Bard, um, some concrete information as well, and some sample petrographic analysis that they had, had done, um, over the past season that I still have to kind of sit down and go through. So there's some more information to fish, you know, fish through there. Um, so I, I, I would hope at the next council meeting, I'll have some more information, but that's kind of where the update is for now. Good.
I know it's only been a couple of weeks, but I just thought, you know, see if you heard anything yet.
Yeah, that, that's what I've got, so.
All right.
Hey, Tom? Anything about the stop signs being removed in the middle of the road by cycle in Asbury? Great news. That's it, yeah. Thank you.
Let me go on the sub box for a minute, I'm preaching to the choir, but I, so last November election day, I woke up, I didn't feel well, I took a COVID test, I tested positive, I stayed home, I didn't vote, right? And this is just really, I can't believe that our legislature did this, but in light of what they're doing now, nothing surprises me. I get a postcard last week. Unless I return the postcard, my voter status has moved inactive because I missed one vote. I'm sorry, it just really irritates me. We, I like to think I live in a world where you wanna encourage people to vote, yet we seem like we're trying to go the other way, and I don't wanna get into politics. It just really kind of took me back that, you know, unfortunate event. I mean, I'm right across the hall, why would I not vote? But I had COVID, and I did what I thought was the right thing to do. And not, no, it was marked, I had returned the postcard, otherwise I was inactive. I didn't know what the hell that means, but anyhow, I'm done. Motion to adjourn, I'm sorry, Beth, anything from you?
Think of how many, after Kristin moved away a long time ago, and I was still like six years later receiving, um, her voter registration.
Anyhow. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned, thank you.